Is Phil coming?
Yes, you're right. I saw him on TV.
Yeah. One of his most important days.
Yeah, I guess one of the most important days.
Well, then my team, first time I... First time I had to convince them that they had this sudden meeting session from the students from the... From where they got the graduate. There'd be people coming in tomorrow. I think it was... So it's, uh...
It was pretty neat.
Big thing. I'm looking through this. It's about such a big thing.
They know it, huh? Switching off this one. On the way time, that's one of the...
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the planning board meeting of the 29th. I'd like to do is everyone stand and I'm gonna ask Mr. Long to lead us in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight is a public meeting. Everyone wishes to get up and speak. I'm gonna ask that you leave your name and your address. You have five minutes on your first time up with any questions that you may have. Go back to the board members. Everyone read the meeting notes from last meeting?
Yes.
May 15th. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Your statement. Motion passes three to zero. Now coming the time for chairman's update. At this present time, I have no input. Board members, any questions? Mr. Long?
Yeah. The other night we had that meeting here.
The informational session, yes sir.
Yeah. And we got this whole new map, which is much better than the one we got with the original warrants. And so the one question is on the... On the warrants, these lots, how it's on this map, am I right? Yes.
But why don't we wait until we open this meeting now?
Yeah.
We'll wait and go over there.
Did you do that?
No, I opened up. If any members, if any members had any questions.
Come on, John, I'm gonna hurry this up. This is the hot game tonight.
Okay.
We can't start until 7:15. A public hearing.
We have no consulting engineers tonight. However, we do have legal counsel, Mr. Jesse Schumer. We have a consultant that's very much up on MBTA requirements. And also with us tonight is town manager, Scott Crabtree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Nels Nelson and he's from...
Community Scale.
Community Scale. And he's who's been engaged by the town to help us as a consultant. He has experience in helping communities throughout Massachusetts and elsewhere, put together zoning that would puts the towns and cities in compliance with the law and the statute.
Thank you. I will ask our clerk, Nancy, do we have any submissions at this time? There are no submissions. Again, this is a public hearing and we're a little early, so I'm gonna ask the board if I get a motion for recess. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll take a recess, a short recess and come back in a few minutes. We'll have, because of the change of venue, we'll give people time to maybe run a little leak.
Yeah, so we switched, so everybody knows that the venue has been switched because of the crowd that we expected in the presentation. So it's been switched to here. So we're just, they're gonna give a little more time to make sure everybody gets their case.
Speak for us. I can hear.
But it's all been reposted and it's...
Hey, Michael.
Hey, John. You sound long mumbledly. Somebody just said that I see.
That's what they just, that's what Mike just told me. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, well, I... We don't have a mic in the little hallway.
Maybe one more person should tell. Eight people just said the same thing.
Got it.
What can he do to sound a little louder? Five people are...
Watch out for this, pass this side.
I know. I know.
Signing that I, you know, was committed to bringing this forward to town meeting. Obviously, town meeting will have to decide what's in the best interest. But the goal, overall goal, so that everybody understands this, is for us to be in compliance, but to look at the least amount of risk of housing being actually developed in certain areas. And I think this is what other communities have done. Strategically, we did the same thing. And I think we would be definitely in a different position if we hadn't done a housing production plan and had all this development, especially up on Route 1, that we looked at to provide, I think, for the town and the needs, as well as bringing in reoccurring revenue that's helping us to be viable here in Saugus. But I think after having hundreds and hundreds of thousands of units that we've brought online or in the pipeline, now we're getting hit with another, you know, thousand, some odd, I think it's a little over a thousand, units that we're required to zone for. So we did target properties that have already been developed. I think there'd be less of an incentive for them to rip down a hundred, $150 million project to try to take advantage of this multi-housing when there's already housing there. And I think that a strong point that Nels and Jesse had brought up and to understand is that a lot of this, the properties we picked have already developed and have units on it. So you're not going to get, even if everything was built, you're not going to get a thousand, some odd new units. You're only going to get what the net difference is in those areas. So if there's a certain parcel that has, you know, 100, 300 units, they only can maybe put 16 more units. You know, it's sort of, you're only going to add 16 units. So I think we'll go into details with that. We have a brief slide, but I just wanted everybody aware of that. Obviously, everybody understands we've submitted the bylaw change based on recommendations from the consultant and town council and special counsel. That was submitted by the Board of Selectmen into a special town meeting warrant. That warrant now, part of our procedure and legally, now comes to the planning board. And the planning board now has to have a public hearing and then make a recommendation one way or the other to town meeting. And then Monday, we're slated for town meeting, and this is slated to be taken up at town meeting, based on whether it's a, you know, positive recommendation or a negative. But I do want to say, so everybody understands, we have concerns over this. And I think that this can change the character of a community pretty quickly if, in fact, you know, these are all buildable lots or potentially to be built on. So we'll go into a little bit more, and we can, but I kind of wanted to set that up for the context for the public, because this may be the first time the public's hearing about exactly what we're doing in here, even though we've been meeting over the past year and a half or two years in discussing this internally and outreach to some of the town meeting members and the elected officials of Selectmen, et cetera. But this might be the first time the public is hearing about it. So the more we can explain and give them context, the better. Obviously, we have a representative town meeting, so town meeting will have to take this up and decide what we want to do as far as if we want to be in compliance and the ramifications if we don't get into compliance. So I think we strategically did the best we could do, because there is certain criteria you have to meet, and it's not all straightforward. I will say that, so that, because the confusion I was getting from people feedback for the last six months or more, is that everybody associates this with the MBTA, because it's called the MBTA. And I think I explained this in a couple meetings before. You know, it's sort of like a Trojan horse in some ways, because using the MBTA as sort of a, this is what we're going to do, and this is what we're going to bring housing, and everybody's going to take the MBTA, and you're going to have the zoning, and the development's going to happen on a bus line, a train line, et cetera, or a bus route. That's really not the case, and that's not how it works. And it all depends on if you're next to, like Lynn has a transit center, a center for buses and all that, and we're a community that is, you know, next to it. So that puts us in a certain level of criteria within the statute. Others, communities out west, they're not, sort of, it's just not applicable to them. But this is a way of, I think, getting in and saying, okay, I'm going to change the zoning. And make no mistakes about it, the statute is, you know, helping a developer for density and for not having parking, with the idea that people are going to commute. So like, even if it's on Route 1, like what you'll see in the maps, the idea would be that, I guess, they could get the, you know, bus line down on Cliftondale Square. They'll make their way down there somehow and then commute to Boston and take a train. That's sort of, I think, what, you know, what the idea is. But I think that the misconception is that this has, like, everything to do exclusively with the MBTA and commuter rails. It does, in the sense of setting up what the criteria is for each community and whether they're under that criteria, but it really isn't, essentially, it's, the zoning doesn't have to be on Lincoln Ave, because the bus runs on Lincoln Ave. So I think that's something that'll clear things up. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Nelson if it pleases you.
Hey, thanks, Scott. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Board. I'm just going to walk through a little bit about what the requirements are, how we got to this point, and what the recommendation is. It won't take too long. So first off, you know, what is the, what are the requirements of this legislation? Yeah, so...
And I would add, I guess, before he gets going, these slides are online, so on the town website, and they've been sent out to town meeting members, so everybody has those. We didn't have them here printed out, because we wanted people to follow along rather than reading. So, but they'll be available for anybody that wants them. You can go right on our website, they're on there now.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the compliance deadline was moved to July 14th. Saugus is an adjacent community. That's impactful, because it means that you can put the compliant zoning anywhere you want in the community, whereas if you were, if you had a transit station, it would have to be around the transit station. So there's some freedom there, and we've been working with Scott and his team for more than a year now, trying to find what we think is the best solution. And, you know, we looked all over town and came up with the version that we all have in front of us. There's a couple other requirements that we had to consider. You have to zone for at least 50 acres, and you have to have zoning that is, provides capacity for 1,130 housing units. And that's derived based upon the characteristics of Saugus, based upon a formula that the state put forward. I will note that that's capacity. It doesn't mean that 1,000 units are going to spring up. It just means that the owner, owners of those parcels have the buyright capacity to come and build a certain number of units. You can also have other requirements on top of that buyright housing. So some of your underlying zoning still applies, barriers, other kinds of setbacks, as long as it doesn't impinge upon that owner's buyright capacity.
And I guess I would add also that this is like making a soup, right? Everybody, this isn't perfect, and everybody would have a different idea, say, you know, you could do this, you could do that, you could sprinkle this, put this ingredient in. So this isn't perfect, but I think this is us putting our minds together and trying to figure out, how do we have the least amount of impact to the community? Because this is unplanned. This isn't something that we're deciding to do, this is something we're being mandated to do. Otherwise, there's consequences. So we wanted to find what the least impact would be for actual development, believe it or not. And I guess, you know, other communities have done that, and it might sound like an oxymoron me saying that, but I think everybody in this room, and everybody in the town of Saugus, as well as town meeting and Selectmen, would want to have the ability to decide what we want for zoning and what type of development we want to have. This is another mandate from the state that's sort of dictating, and I think the overall arching thing is, we have a housing issue that nationally and in our state, and it seems like what they're doing is trying to basically jam this down every city and town's throat and say, this is what it is, and if not, we're going to come after you and sue you for violating the law, and we're going to take funding away from you, and et cetera. So I think that everybody has to understand that, and I just can't reiterate that enough.
Okay, yeah, so the last requirement, in terms of how this has to be situated in Saugus, is that the district has to be contiguous. So it's, you can't basically take all the existing multifamily up and down Route 1 and say, okay, you're in the zone, and you're in the zone, and you're in the zone, okay, we've met our capacity. It has to all be connected, and that's how we got to the solution that we finally arrived at. So this is an overlay. It is just concerning the parcels that are in red, yellow, and green up here on the map. Everything that can be done in the underlying zoning can still happen. This overlay is granting the owners the ability to do buyright multifamily housing up to a certain capacity in just these parcels. So other parts of Route 1 are not being impacted. Square 1 Mall is not part of this, for example. And you can see that, you know, the other business highway sub-districts are somewhat overlapping with this, but this is really just focused on these parcels. So what we're going to do is walk through each of these parcels and why we chose it, and how together they form a compliant district for Saugus.
Just to clarify, the parcels of, if you go back to the previous slide, if you see the R2 in yellow, those are not included. It's just the parcels outlined in the dark yellow, the parcels outlined in the dark red. The entire Business Highway District is not included, the entire R1 is not included. It's just that handful of parcels.
Right, so I think that's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up. But obviously, on the map, and I think it's a different color up there, right? Is that green? That's the green?
Yep.
Okay. So basically, to understand, there's Subdistrict A, which is red, Subdistrict B, which is green, which is a little bit aqua up there, and Subdistrict C is yellow. And to understand, maybe you can, if you haven't covered, cover what the criteria in the density is different for each one of those categories, and that's sort of the formula that we had to follow, and that's obviously the insight and expertise of the consultant to make sure that we met all the criteria. But there are different densities, and we'll talk about why the, some of these developments that are already developed or in the process are already having advantageous density, and there's no way they'd want to switch to this, because they'd have less density. So...
Great, yeah, thank you, Scott. So, that's right. Basically, to meet the goals of the community, we wanted to look at areas that already had received some kind of development, whether it's multifamily or other. Other communities have done this. I think that it makes sense as a way of taking credit for the good work that Saugus has already done to promote multifamily along Route 1. You've created a lot of units, and this is kind of overlapping with that existing units, those existing units. So basically, in order to get the most credit for the work that's already been done, we had three different density zones, A being the densest, B being middle, so 15 units per acre, and then the C is the lowest, 12 units per acre. But all taken together, they achieved the minimum threshold of 15 units per acre.
And that's a great point. Obviously, one of the primary goals is, and I talked about it earlier, is we've already done a ton of rezoning and development through a housing production plan, which, you know, we want to have development. It's obviously the positive of, and that's what the planning board does, of viability of the town and the community with new growth, building permits, and reoccurring revenue in our levy. But we want to make sure we're, I think, we want to be in control of it, and that's what the town has, you know, obviously gone back and forth with in town meeting. But we want to have, you know, smart growth that has the least amount of impact with being able to generate the most revenue for the town. This, again, is something that's being mandated, so we're not in control of it. So we definitely, the priority was, to make sure that, how do we capture what we've already had for development and get as much credit, putting the zoning and stuff that's already been developed, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Thank you, Scott. Okay, so I'm just going to walk you through the choices that were made. So Avalon is two parcels. There are currently 214 units on there. The capacity of those two parcels with the overlay would be 232 units. So that's pretty closely aligned. Moving south along Broadway, we have McDonald's. We had to include these parcels in order to make it contiguous, so in order to get across the street, across Broadway, to connect to the Avalon. That being said, these parcels are rather small. There's an existing McDonald's on there, so in a way, it's not that likely to be redeveloped, but there is currently no units on there, and there would be capacity for 28.
And that's a great point Nels brings up, is that we were able, because of that, we were able to use parcels on both sides of Route 1. Even though Broadway and Route 1 runs down the middle, having that McDonald's lot included in this strategically connects with the Hilltop, the old Hilltop property, which then connects everything else together. And obviously, we looked at where to put this stuff, and we wanted to keep this out of neighborhoods as much as possible, but that allowed us that strategically to connect everything across the Route 1.
Great. So moving, moving south, we have Walmart, which would have capacity for 164 units, but is unlikely to be redeveloped due to the amount of investment that is there. Further south, there's Nobo, which has 245 units.
That's the old golf town for everybody that, John, you know, you know where that is, right?
Very much so.
Yeah. So this would have a capacity of 140 units. So this is an example of a case where you've already built multifamily, the capacity is less than what's there now, so we can consider, you know, the potential impact for Saugus for this parcel is to be zero. Okay, now we have Saugus Ridge, which is 300 units. The capacity would be 309, so pretty close. This parcel is a little bit tricky, because it is really large, it includes a lot of wetlands, and when you do the rezoning for MBTA communities, it has to be at least 15 units per acre across everything, whether it's developed or not. So we tried to dial in to achieve that. And then the Mobile Home Park on Broadway currently has 71 units, and the capacity would be 96. And then finally, across the way, the Holiday Inn, Covita Healthcare, currently has zero units, but a 40B development is in the works, which would be 189 units. So again, trying to locate the zoning capacity where there is already existing or planned multifamily.
Right, and if you can maybe talk about this property here, as far as the density that's, Jesse, maybe you can talk about the density that's allowed now compared to what would be...
Sure. So if you, if you notice, all but one of these properties here is located in the Business Highway Sustainable Development District, and two of those, the Avalon and the Nobo, those were developed when the requirements of that bylaw allow up to 30 units per acre. So that's the reason why you've got, for example, the Nobo with more density now than this bylaw would allow. So that's, that's part of what we were trying to accomplish, as Nels said before, is giving the town credit for development that's already occurred and focusing in on this specific area, in particular, where there has been quite a bit of development in recent years, or being proposed, or under construction currently.
And then we know the 40B, all these lots.
So the 40B site, that's, as the slide notes, it's proposed for 189 units. The capacity we're showing there is 174. So we expect this site to be, provided the zoning board approves the project as it's proposed now, it's still undergoing hearings, so that hasn't been determined yet. But if the zoning board approves it at the proposed density, the density of the site would be greater than what this zoning would allow. And therefore, in our calculation, the likelihood of these kind of sites being redeveloped under this zoning is very unlikely. And that applies also to the commercial properties that are being rezoned as well, the Walmart and the McDonald's. It just, just those kind of properties are perennial uses, they don't generally close down. Those are both very thriving businesses. Anybody who goes to the Walmart knows, it's always busy. We don't, we don't expect that that will be going anywhere anytime soon, and that's an approach that's also been followed in other communities. For example, Linfield, we're neighbors to the north, rezoned for their MBTA Communities District. The Herb Chambers Automobile Dealerships with the same kind of reasoning.
And also, Mr. Chairman and Board members, the Trail, the Trailer Park, I think, what's it, eight? I forget what the number is. What's it, eight?
Eight forty-six.
Eight forty-six Broadway, which is the Mobile Home Park. That's something that could have potential for development, but I think that the mobile parks themselves have all kinds of statutory protections, so I think that there'll be, that would be something that may be difficult and challenging as well, because of those, their own protections.
So that wraps up all the parcels. This is a summary table showing basically the calculation that you need to submit, along with the zoning, to the state. That shows how many acres, what the capacity is, what the capacity units are. And if we look at that all together, I'll just also quickly mention that we have imposed dimensional standards on each of the districts, and those dimensional standards are in line with the underlying districts. So finally, here we're comparing what's required versus what's being realized. So you have to have at least 50 acres. This is almost 78. We have more units than are required. We're just getting over the line in terms of the overall density, in terms of units per acre, and it's contiguous, so that goal's also achieved. So that's all we have for you tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just, I think this came up before, and it was like a pretty good example. I think someone talked about, Jesse, we talked about the Avalon, which is the old Hilltop property, and what the total is now, and if they wanted to add units, it'd only be a net, like, 18 units that they'd be able to do, and obviously financially, doesn't seem to be feasible. But I don't know if you know the details on that, but we did discuss that, and I thought that was really important, to kind of give an example of like, what happens if they, you know, it's, you know, so many units that are allowed there, what happens if they want to add all those units?
So this, the property, the Hilltop Avalon, as Scott mentioned, there's eight, the capacity is 18 additional units. But in order to do that, you know, this property is subject to existing permits that were issued by this board back in, I think, 2017, 2018, thereabouts, that allow this project. There are conditions that apply to that property based on those approvals. So it wouldn't be a simple matter of the developer coming in to say, I want to do 18 more units. They'd have to go back and amend the existing approvals to make whatever they've got that they're proposing consistent with what this board has already approved.
And I think that's, that's the presentation, and obviously, the consultant, the attorney, myself, here to answer any questions from the board, and then obviously open up to the public for questions. We're happy to answer anything we can.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the, to the board members for any questions that they may have.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
No questions. Mr. Long?
Yeah, excuse me.
And just, Mr. Long, Mr. Long, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, through, just so people are aware, this, this committee separately and different, we've answered questions offline and things, a lot of the questions probably you've been already been aware of and gotten answers. Obviously, some of you are in town meetings, so you've heard some of the, of this presentation. But I just wanted to, because I don't want people to think like the board has no questions. Obviously, you guys are pretty well informed in it, but, pardon, Mr. Long, sorry.
I didn't have any questions, because I've been listening to this for the last six months. I know everything there is to know, so I'll let them. I know Mr. Long will have plenty of questions for all of us.
I read it.
We appreciate his expertise.
Going back to, it said, district locations, 23.2, 2.1. It says the land included in the MCMOD are the following town Saugus tax lots, tax parcels, as well as that portion of the layout of Broadway that butts the included tax parcels. Why didn't we just, why isn't that cut off at the following town tax boxes? Why do we have that?
Can we just get the number again? 23?
Point two.
Twenty, what number is it?
Twenty-three point two.
Yeah, I think I have a quick answer for that. The state wants you to have the zone be to the middle of the right-of-way. So as you, we were just walking through the parcels, but the actual zoning layers go to the middle of the street, which is why it's worded that way.
That's what makes, that's what ensures that the parcels are contiguous with each other, because the zoning goes into the street itself.
So what you're saying then is, the roadway itself, these parcels will actually go to, no, not go, they'll go to Route 1.
The parcels are included within the zone, but the zone, like, you can see on the map, this is your zoning map, your zoning map goes over the streets.
Right.
And so it's just making that same statement, that these zoning districts, you know, are including parcels, but then also your rights-of-way. And that connects, that connects them across the right-of-way as well.
Okay, thank you. Second one. It came up the other night, on Tuesday night, I think one of the meeting members raised the issue about Avalon, which was developed under the old overlay, you know, the old Hilltop, for anybody who doesn't know what Avalon, which Avalon is. The question was asked, could Avalon tear down those single strip buildings in the front and add additional housing units in that space? In other words, can they change from what was once one deal, you know, the overlay for multi-use rather, and with retail, and change it to just, you know, multi-use residential, no retail?
So what they could, the answer to the question is, yes, they could do that, but the financial incentives to doing that would be significantly reduced, because you've got a significant investment into the existing development. So in addition to that, this board, when you approved that project, included conditions, and your approval of it was dependent on the inclusion of those commercial uses. So what they would need to do, in addition to coming in for the site plan approval of their proposed redevelopment, they would have to come back to this board to have an amendment of their approved master plan for that development that's there today, so that this board could assess whether, under that approval, you think it's consistent with what you approved, or the members of the board who were on at that time approved, which included those commercial uses.
And also the net units that they would possibly get.
But, yeah.
I don't think that's, that's the point.
Yeah. Also, we have this, this chart here of density and side yard, backyard, and all that. If it's not covered by this chart, then any other regulations refer back, actually go back to the article, I mean, to the zoning bylaw.
That's right. The bylaw provides that if there are other requirements of the underlying zoning that are not changed by this overlay district, those underlying requirements still apply. So this is what's called an overlay zoning district, and that means that someone who owns one of these parcels could opt into the zoning. But otherwise, the existing zoning that's there today still applies.
And another question, the, once a landowner chooses to go this way, there's no going back. Is that true?
That, that's a fair statement. I think you could, we're talking a deep, two-level hypothetical, but yes, a develop, the owner of the Walmart could say, I want to opt into this district, and then build whatever they are going to build, opt out and go back under the Business Highway, tear down that second project. But the dollars and cents just would never make sense for something like that to ever happen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have one question. Are any of these possible susceptible to being opened up to the residential neighborhood?
No. So going, same as Bob's question just a moment ago, the underlying requirements of the Business Highway Sustainable Development District that are not overriding... the Business Highway Sustainable Development District that are not overridden by this still apply. So the requirement that is there today that says that you cannot connect these properties to the local roads, including Longwood Avenue, that would, that requirement would still be in place.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? We'll open it up to the public. If you have any questions, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Yes, sir.
Jovacioni, 31 Wamasadav. Thank you for taking your time. I appreciate the work of the consultant, town manager, and council. I thought it was a really good presentation. And just to, you know, look at, because I had the same question, just with the underlying zoning, 23.23 specifically states, regulations for use to mention all other provisions of the zoning bylaws govern, governing the respective underlying zoning districts shall remain in full force, except as modified or superseded by this district. And reading through that, nothing supersedes the access to roads, because that would be my biggest concern, something we've been, you know, very intentional about, the BHSD. You know, looking at this map, I don't see really any developable projects, which I think was kind of the goal of it. No one's, just, it's economically infeasible in 2025 to, you know, tear down a building to build more residential units, especially when some of them are still being built. The 40Bs are in place, so I think the one over at the Palumbo property is being voted on right now, and it goes to the state. You know, overall, I agree with the, with this map. I did, you know, I don't agree with the essence of the bylaw. I understand the logic the state is using to get there because, you know, Saugus is not alone in, you know, being anti-development specifically with the quantity of units that have been built specifically on Route One. You know, I know a couple of years ago, I tried to do something at a smaller scale, but just Town Meeting's made it very clear that, you know, any sort of development is, you know, not something many towns, not just Saugus, have the appetite for. You know, and I, the biggest thing I like to hone on, and I thought they did a really good job of explaining, is just, you know, there's been a lot of talk in Town Meeting about legal fees between, you know, representing the Saugus School Committee, you know, from marijuana and the legal fees we're dealing with there. This is exponentially higher. The Attorney General has made it abundantly clear that they're going to fight this tooth and nail. Milton has spent over $1 million and lost, essentially, and that's just, you know, I don't think that's something we want to go through. I'm sure Town Meeting, you know, there's the idea of, let's make a statement to the state, let's fight back on this. But, you know, for a while, we really haven't had a control of our zoning. We've always had 40B, you know, creeping down our neck, and, you know, unfortunately, we had to, you know, tear down a fair amount of undeveloped land to build Saugus Ridge over there. Palumbo property, you know, I think puts us above 10% there, and, you know, if we comply with this law, we meet our 40B requirement for the first time in a while, we have full control of our zoning. And I think that's a good thing, so that we're not being handcuffed from the state. I don't think it's going to be the last time that the state, you know, steps, you know, oversteps in terms of making towns and cities develop and create housing because there is a housing crisis in the state, you know, and we're eight miles from downtown. So this is certainly not going to be the last time that the state, you know, incentivizes housing. But for now, I think this does a really good job of meeting the state requirements. Yeah, that's all I have. I really am not interested in, you know, losing grants, MVP grants, you know, which we get almost every year, infrastructural grants, grants that fund our Saugus Housing Authority, you know, open ourselves up to civil rights lawsuits. And obviously, you know, the state has deep pockets to fight this in court. So that's not something I'm interested in, and I think this plan does a really good job. I hope you guys support it. I hope Town Meeting supports it on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No other questions from board members? Take a motion. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to accept what has been presented to the board this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, you want to close it? Okay.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Now we move on to get a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recommend Article 23, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, Article to Town Meeting.
I'll make a second.
All in favor of passing this through to Town Meeting?
Aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. This will be passed forward to Town Meeting for a meeting on Monday night?
Yeah, Monday night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members, and thank you to the.
We'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you put into this.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to reiterate, I think that the town is open to development. I think we've had quite a bit of development, so we're sort of trying to regroup with that. But I think that this, with the state and the housing crisis, trying to tell each community, including ours, what we should do and how we should have things zoned, I think that's the challenge and the concern for all of us. But I think we want to balance that strategically, but also try to be in compliance so that we don't have the lawsuits and the legal fees and the loss of, you know, funding, which could, you know, all of it could be, would be in the millions, both sides of that. So, you know, I think that hopefully, we've met with a lot of Town Meeting members. We've tried to get the word out publicly, and obviously, this is a public hearing. Hopefully, people are informed and educated and will consider those things when they deliberate Monday night.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the town. I just wanted to thank the town manager, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Schumer for all the hours that you've put into this and all the hard work and thought and consideration, and for making it very simple for everybody to understand. And also, this is your second meeting you hosted. I know you hosted one last week for the Town Meeting members. There's been much, you know, apprehension about this and a lot of anxiety, so I think you guys put everybody's mind at ease, and thank you for protecting our town and our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely agree. You got a motion to, your favorite motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is there. I want to thank everyone for coming. Hope everyone understands. And this, you said, Mr. Chairman, will be on the town website when anyone needs to review it.
Everything, all the information's on the town website, including the, including the slides and the bylaw and the map. And every Town Meeting member's been sent that, was sent out to every Town Meeting member as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Thank you.